I think we've got. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Gig Harbor City Council Meeting of Monday, August night at 2021. The time is 5:31. This this meeting tonight, City Council Meeting, is being broadcast live on Zoom. Residents can give comment during the public comment portion of the meeting by pressing Raise Hand button at the bottom of your Zoom window or by pressing *9 on your phone. Please wait to be called on when is your time. Public comment will be on items that public comment on items that are not on the agenda will be separate from each comment portion that is at the council bill. Public comment is not a Q and A, but a time to make a public statement. And we'll be asking you to please state your name and your address and keep it to three minutes. With that, we'll start with roll call. Councilmember Abersold.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Franch.
Here.
Councilmember Heinz.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Councilmember Rothenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Woo.
Here.
Great. And this is Mayor Kit Kuhn from our staff, interim city administrator Tony Pasecki.
Here.
Interim city clerk Josh Stecker.
Here.
City attorney Daniel Kenny.
Here.
City engineer Trent Ward.
Here.
Community director Katrina Knudsen.
Here.
Police chief Kelly Busey. Okay, I don't see him. Finance director Dave Rodenbach.
Here.
Okay, and I believe Cynthia Weed, are you one of our bond holder? Representatives?
I'm your bond attorney.
There we go. Close. Great. Thank you, Cynthia. And then Dave, you are, how do you pronounce your last name?
Good evening, Dave Trigusor.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you.
DA Davidson and company. Thank you. Is there anyone else I have not called?
I will point out the chief is here now.
Okay. Kelly, I had called on you before. Are you there?
Yes, I am. I had some connection issues.
Okay, welcome. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Do I have any changes to the agenda tonight? Okay, great. We will proceed forward. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Let's see, which one was it? Was it Heinz or Rothenberg the second? Or do you want to flip a coin?
Go to finish.
All right, Josh, Josh Decker, you got that?
I've got it.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. Okay, the mayor's mayor's report is recognition of the Olympic gold medalist Nevin Harrison. On August 4th, which was actually August 5th in Tokyo, Gig Harbor and millions in the world were watching Nevin Harrison take the gold and win the women's canoe 200 meter race in Tokyo for the United States. Nevin, as most of you know, was trained in Gig Harbor with the Gig Harbor canoe and kayak racing team. We are thrilled to have, we are thrilled for the US, for Nevin, her friends and her family and her fellow teammates and Coach Allen and Aaron and support coaches. And we are thrilled to have her part of our community here in Gig Harbor. I had to actually joke that night that I told Alan, everyone tells me to stop promoting Gig Harbor because then they want to move here. And then he goes and helps get Olympic person, you know, and puts us on the on the world map. So with that, we'd like to read a proclamation. Proclamation of the mayor of the city of Gig Harbor honoring Nevin Harrison for winning the gold medal at the 2020. Wait a minute, 2021, I'm sorry, there's a correction there. Olympic Games in Tokyo, Japan. Whereas on August 5th, 2021, at the age of 19, Nevin Harrison won a gold medal in the 2021 Olympic Games in Tokyo, Japan, in the inaugural women's canoe single 200 meter race. And whereas Ms. Harrison, as the youngest competitor in the race, posted a winning time of 45.932 seconds. And whereas Ms. Harrison became the first winner of this Olympic event. She also became the first American to win a medal in canoeing since 2004 and the first American to win a gold medal in canoeing since 1988. And whereas walk canoeing rate, walk canoe racing is an individual competition, it requires the support of coaches and teammates. And whereas Ms. Harrison has trained with a Gig Harbor canoe and kayak racing team. And whereas the Gig Harbor canoe and kayak racing team has done much to support the community and provide opportunities for youth. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Kit Kuhn, mayor of the city of Gig Harbor, do hereby recognize Nevin Harrison for accomplishment of winning a gold medal in at the 2021 Tokyo Olympics and thank her and her canoe and kayak, her Gig Harbor canoe and kayak racing team for the honor they have brought to the city of Gig Harbor, the state of Washington and the United States of America. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand, cause the seal of the city of Gig Harbor to be affixed this ninth day of August 2021. Thank you. And with that, we'd like to have.
And Mayor, Councilmember Rothenberg just emailed me and said that he's having an issue with his computer. He's just going to change computers real quick.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. Alan, can you hear me? Okay, so why don't you call me? Could you have a phone number there? Why don't you call me? Do you have a phone? And then I can put you on speaker. Okay, it's 253-853-7611. Call me, we'll put you on the speaker and then we can see at the same time. Hi, Alan. All right. Okay, can everyone hear him? Yes, they can.
Okay, I can't see anything. Let's see what we can do here. I, I thank you all. I thank you, Mayor Kit. The proclamation is awesome. It's really cool. And thank you, council members. Hey, can you see me?
We could a minute ago, we can. So if you. Never mind, don't do it that way. Because we get, we have a big echo.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, but um, yeah, but um, my voice echoes like five times. So maybe don't try that way. So anyway, whenever you try, just go back the other way to talking.
I'm here.
Okay, well, let's just. You talk, not me. Go ahead. Alan? Okay. Well, I'm sure we'll have Alan back. We want it, we want to have, if, when it works right, we want to have Nevin down here, obviously. She's, I believe, spending time with her friends and family. But when the time's appropriate, we'd love to have her come to a council meeting. So I do, I'll just say, I know Alan's dream, my daughter was one of the racers way back and Alan always said, I was too old to be in the Olympics, but my next goal was to bring kids and prepare them to go to the Olympics and get to the Olympics. And he achieved that goal. And this is a dream come true for him, Coach Aaron, a lot of people from the team and the different teammates. So all of Gig Harbor, all of Gig Harbor, the greater Gig Harbor, we were honored to have this team here in our city and have Olympic gold medalist Nevin Harrison. So on behalf of the city council, we're all thrilled. Okay. With that, we'll go on to the city administrators' report is a recruitment update.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll just make a couple of quick comments. We have had a lot of open positions this year. The HR department has been working through literally dozens of recruitments. And we have several open right now, including the parks manager that is out as of today. So I won't steal any more of her thunder. I've asked Camille Boarders, our HR director, to give us a short report as to all the activity with regards to recruitments that her department has done this year. Camille?
Evening, councilmembers, mayor and members of the public. Tonight, I'd like to provide you with a brief update on the citywide recruitments. Currently, we have 12 recruitments open with a total of 14 positions to fill. That includes four seasonal worker positions and an RFQ for our judge position. These openings can be found on the city's website or at www.governmentjobs.com backslash careers backslash Gig Harbor. Put a plug in for our positions. So far this year, we've had a total of 32 requisitions. We've screened 822 applications. And as of today, we've hired 21 employees. And to give you kind of an idea of where we've been at in the past, for 2020, we had a total of 600 applications. And in 2019, we had a total of 512 applications. Also, in 2020, we've hired 18 people. And in 2019, we hired 21. And we're only in August and we're at 21 currently. We recognize that not all applications move on to be reviewed by the hiring teams. That's because some people may be applying for their unemployment requirement. But every application is reviewed by human resources and depending on any qualifications, some could take longer than others to review. And we've had several challenges recently. As you all know, I've talked about this previously with the COVID pandemic. And I just briefly want to point out the seasonal worker applications. We've had 26 first seasonal hires. And we hired people for the positions, but two left early to go back to college. One that we hired as actually we hired as a budgeted laborer position. And then one just recently quit to pursue other opportunities. So that one's kind of back in the queue. And that's why there's four available positions there. And that's pretty much all I have this evening. I'm available to answer any questions you have regarding current openings at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Camille. And again, I just wanted to very quickly highlight for council that we have a lot of recruitments going on. And in particular, the park manager position, which I know everyone has been very anxious for us to get going on, is finally out there. And the way we do our recruitments is leave them all open until filled. So once we get a healthy number of applications and a healthy number of qualified applicants, we'll start the next process, which is to vet them, interview them. But we always leave something open just in case a shining star decides to apply at the last moment. So with that, counsel, if you have any questions of Camille or me, we're ready to answer those for you. Well, I see none. So that is our report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Rothenberg, can you, can you hear, can you hear us or speak okay?
Yes, I can now.
Okay.
I got the computers.
Great. If any council member at any time or staff has a problem, just raise your hand and we'll wait to get that fixed. Um. Now we, I will open up the public comment on non-agenda items. Tony, were there?
Your Honor, we have the staff report on the Harborview Drive speed study.
That's correct. Okay, thank you. Harborview Drive, July 2021, speed study results. Well, we hear from our city engineer Trent Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council. At the, at the July 12th council meeting, during council comments, councilmember Franch asked or indicated that he felt vehicle speeds along Harborview Drive were becoming excessive. And Administrator Tony Pasecki asked that staff would collect some speed data along Harborview Drive and report back on the results. So the purpose for this brief staff report tonight is to report back to you the results that we derive from week long data collection of speed, vehicle speeds along Harborview Drive. So staff installed city owned speed counters, vehicle counters slash speed counters on Harborview Drive in the vicinity of Ansett Park property. Just to give you the rough location, we installed them on July 20th and then pulled, pulled the equipment on July 27th. Possibly 28. I might have that wrong, 28th. And downloaded the data. And just in summary, what we found is the 85th percentile, and I'll give a little background or definition of that. 85th percentile during that week long period of time, the 85th percentile speed limb or speed was 23 miles per hour. Just to, to give you an idea, if you don't know what the 85th percentile speed is, it's a, it's a typical statistical measurement of a set of data, in this case, vehicle speeds, where 85% of the vehicles passing this particular location, in this case, where the speed counters were, were either 23 miles an hour or lower in speed. 85th percentile is a is a speed that is used in, in the transportation engineering industry nationwide as a basis for trying to establish what appropriate speed in a roadway segment should be. And generally speaking, it's, it's an attractive statistical number to use because it reflects the collective judgment of the vast majority of drivers as to be a reasonable speed for the conditions and the location. I have other data available to us. If there's, you know, more information that council or the mayor would like, we could provide that. Or if there's any questions tonight, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Go ahead, councilmember Abersold.
Trent, thank you for that. Two questions, I guess. So number one, is there a way we can take those same devices and place them in other parts of the city to do recordings?
Absolutely.
And then how do we submit where we would like to have those placed or recommend spots? And I guess the second question is, does it tell us anything what the 15% percentile, what those speeds were? What was the highest speed clocked? And does it start at 23 miles per hour going up? Or what's, what's kind of the metadata on that?
Sure. So the, there's intervals that are looked at. Generally, it's broken up into under 15 miles an hour, 15 to 20, 20 to 25, and then in increments of five. There are some outliers. We have all that data. So, for example, I, at, on one particular day, I'm looking at it here at 5:00 PM, somebody apparently drove through there at between 60 and 65 miles an hour, one vehicle. But that is an outlier, obviously. That's one of the 15%. I think a quick look at the data is there were maybe two to four vehicles that exceeded 35 miles an hour on any given day. And that's just a real quick look.
And again, where was that location?
The, the equipment was set up on Harbor Harborview Drive and kind of across from Ansett Park. So near councilmember Franch's property, actually.
Okay, so on a curved road, a road with a big curve, not a straightaway?
Yeah, I mean, it's, there is a curvature to it, yeah, but not on a curve necessarily. And then to, to answer your, your prior question, I think if, if there are desired locations by council or mayor for us to do other speed data collection, if that could be routed through city administrator Tony Pasecki's office, that'd be great. And then we can program it into our time. And it's, it's staff installed equipment, it's city owned equipment. So we just need to know where you want things checked and we can try to get to it.
Great. And yeah, I support that. If we do get a lot of requests by council and by our citizens, a lot of it's proven that majority of people are driving the speed limit or under. But I think if you can route it all to our Tony Pasecki, our city administrator, he can gather it and it would be best to have that done. Appreciate that.
Yep.
For courtesy of staff. Councilmember Franch.
Trent, whereabouts exactly was this? Was it east or west of the west property line of Ansett Park?
Well, I, I know where it is because I saw him put it out the day. It was on the, it was more towards the west side.
But it was also more centered on the property from what I saw.
Yeah, I would say centered, I would say centered more than favoring the west or the east, but.
Centered on the Ansett Park property?
Yeah.
Okay, and was there, how close is the calibration on that tube?
Well, the equipment is virtually new. It's purchased, I believe, four to five years ago.
Well, I mean, what is it ever calibrated? Or is there ever a problem with calibration?
Not on that age of equipment, unless there's some, you know, something faulty with it. So I, no, I don't believe there'd be any, there were any calibration issues with it.
So, you know, I'm looking at the printout and, you know, you've got the median, which is kind of a, do you have an average number?
That's the mean, which would be.
That's not the mean. Or the median. The average is a completely different number than the average.
The mean is average. The median is the most, the median is the most frequent speed that was obtained by the data.
Well, isn't the median, the, there was 50%, 50% of the traffic was above, 50% was below. And that's how you arrive at the median?
That's correct.
Yes.
So the, the average can be, if you have an outrageous number, high or low, you can, the median's can, is kind of a false number at times, depending on the upper limits or lower limits of data.
So in, on this data, the average was 19.6 miles an hour. The median, where half was above it and half was below it, was 19.9. The mode, which is the most frequent number recorded, was 20.5.
And I think the important thing is, is what, you know, we come back to the 85th percentile, the majority of people, if you want to call 85% the majority, 85% of the vehicles are traveling below the speed limit through this area. There are speed.
And, and you know, I, I am well aware, you know, that you, we, we have complaints and we do these tests and perception sometimes a little bit different than the facts on the ground. You know, if, I haven't been, I don't happen to live in the other locations where these, some of these tests have been conducted, but you know, especially in the summer, I'm looking out the window or I'm on my deck all the time. And boy, I'm telling you, those numbers sound really low. So, I mean, if, you know, I'm a believer in mechanical devices. That's why I was asking about calibration. I think my, my neighbors will be real interested in this. I guess my, my last question would be for Chief Busey. Is there any radar guns that, that you loan out that people can use?
Yes, and we do with a visual display board if they want to do that, too. A couple of things that I can address from Trent's presentation. First, the outliers. Oftentimes, those are emergency vehicles. Now, I'm here to tell you, it was not an emergency vehicle if they registered 65 miles an hour. I don't know where that would have come from. I can also tell you that last year, we did a speed study combined on North Harborview Drive, where we used the tubes that were used in this case and our speed sign that you've seen that also records data. And they were basically the same data. So I believe that the instrument is probably calibrated correctly there.
Well, it's a, you know, it's, I guarantee you, when I talk to my neighbors and I tell them, well, this was the data, they're gonna, they're not going to believe it. But, you know, the data is the data. It's mechanically collected. So there's no bias to it. So I appreciate you guys putting it out there. And I'll, I'll talk to you about the radar gun sometime here in the future, chief.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rothenberg.
Yes, Trent, I'm curious, the data collected 24 hours a day, right?
Yes, it is.
We're collecting data for somebody that drives through there at 2:00 in the morning or 4:00 in the morning.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
24 hours a day, seven days a week is, is what we like to collect at a minimum.
Okay. So then my other question then is for the chief. Chief, do we find speeds in off hours, like in the middle of night and that kind of thing, higher or lower going through that area? Would you?
I would say, well, I'm glad you qualified that by saying through that area. I don't have enough historical data to prove that, but anecdotally, I would say that the vehicles would travel a little faster when there's less dense traffic and also less parked cars perhaps.
So, and if you, the way I look at that data then is that the daytime speeds are probably, the mean is probably even lower, given that the nighttime speeds can bring it up.
Right. I think Trent probably has it broken down by hour. I'm not sure on that.
Right. That's all the information we need. Thank you, Trent.
I do. And, you know, yeah, we don't need to belabor it anymore. But what it, at a glance, what it appears is that the speeds exceed 25 miles an hour. They're about 25 to 35 is where the majority of the 15% outliers are.
Okay, councilmember Heinz. You're on mute.
I had the, I had the same question. I think the councilmember Rothenberg did. And that is, is can we break up this data to basically show a histogram by hours or half hours or whatever it is of operation called? When, when do these things occur? Okay, to, to, to determine this issue, to try to reconcile this issue of, well, we don't see anybody, but we're not looking at the right time. Okay. And Councilman Franch is looking at his window at just the right time or whoever. They're obviously, but by the way, they're focused on the 15%, not the 85% or whatever that number is. Okay. So it would be, I think it'd be worthwhile to show in, in this, what I'd call hot period called, what, what do those numbers really look like? Okay. And, and, and can we, can we nail it down? Is there a time period when? And 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 can we can we nail it down? Is there a time period when this is prevalent and therefore? Consider, for example, enforcement actions during a limited timeframe as opposed to twenty-four hours a day. Twenty-four hours a day, it doesn't make sense, okay? That is, you should say for for this kind of percentages. It's like going fishing and there's not many fish in the sea here. But if you go at the right time, there might very well be, okay? So that's just my comment.
Okay, Count, thank you. Councilmember Abersole.
Yeah, so I just I emailed Tony my areas that I would like to have inspected. And then I'd also like to require or request more information about those speed guns for the public. I think we need to recognize that that there's a corner down there. It's downtown Gig Harbor, and I'm not saying that there isn't speed, but I'd like to. I'd like to see some tests done on straightaways. I know that I've got a road that it sounds, you know, and it could be just be mufflers and stuff, but. It sounds like they're coming up pretty fast and especially behind my house on Hunt. So I grateful for this opportunity and for this information. I think it's great that we're doing this. I'd like to. To nail down this information one way or another, because like Councilmember Franch said, perception can be different than the reality. And I know the chief gets a lot of heat about this, and so I want to make sure that he is being treated fairly and that. We get good data on this, so thank you for putting this all together.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodenbergh.
Yeah, I I. I agree with the comments that Councilman Hines said, but I we could chop this data up any way you like and spend a lot of time on it. And if we found that there was a lot of speeding down there, then I would think that would be worth. Spending staff time on it, but given that, you know, the the mean is nineteen miles an hour or whatever it was that Mr. Pasecki said it was. Doesn't seem like it have any issues, so I wouldn't suggest, my opinion, we shouldn't be spending more staff time on. I think we. We collected the data, we have the results. There is doesn't seem to be a problem other than you have a few speeders on occasion. It's all matter priorities of staff time is what I'm thinking.
I would have to agree echo that with counsel of what Councilmember Rodenbergh said. I mean, I. I live one house behind Soundview and and I hear cars go up and. Well, I heard a motorcycle the other day, but I know it's it's muffler. It's muffler is is super loud and it's really hard to get that one. Person that's going fast at that one split second that they're doing, and by the time you react, they're long gone. So I think doing what we've done with the data, but as as Kelly, as as the chief pointed out, we've got a. A sign there that's proven that the calibrated thing is is done right. So, you know, I think we check it periodically and move on. I would agree. Thank you for that data, Trent. I appreciate it. And. Councilmembers can follow up and if it gets too much, then, you know, feel free to reach out to Tony, too. Okay, with that, we'll go to, thank you very much, Trent. With that, we'll go on to the public comment on non-agenda items. I'm opening up the that. Time right now. Tony, were there any written comments from the public on non-agenda items?
Yes, there is one short one. It's from Karen McDonald. She do I give her address as well?
Yes, please.
One four four one zero Sherman Drive Northwest Gig Harbor. With a Delta variant of COVID nineteen spreading like wildfire around the entire country. You should really pare back on the super spreader events you have on your calendar, especially with the school year starting soon. And that's her only comment. That's the only written one we received as well.
Okay. Thank you. Now I will open it up for anyone that's calling in that wishes to speak. I'm trying to get my stopwatch ready. Any callers that wish to speak? Please feel free to do so by pressing star nine. Yes, there is. Pete Weimer, Why Miller, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
I can. I'm going to start the please give me your name and address and three minutes, please.
Very good. I'm Pete Waymuller and I lived in and around Gig Harbor since nineteen eighty-four. I currently live at one oh two one two. Thirty-sixth Street Northwest in Gig Harbor. And first, I want to thank the council for all their efforts to preserve Gig Harbor's rich history. This is one of the biggest reasons why I love living here. I represent Climate Pierce County, a consortium of nonprofit organizations which is helping Pierce County. Become more more resilient to the impacts coming from a changing climate. Those of primarily a concern from extreme weather events that are increasing in intensity and frequency. The approach determined most cost-effective for the county uses resource sharing between cities and communities. Where similar threats can be addressed with similar solutions. And the best plan advises pooling resources at times for larger countywide mitigation. We also have resources in neighboring counties proposing plans as I speak. I'm currently attempting to determine the greatest threats to Gig Harbor and the surrounding area from climate change. Though we follow the best available science, which is continually updated locally. By the U Dub Climate Impacts Group and the United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. I would like to collect some historical data regarding impacts of climate change on the on the specific natural resources or people in Gig Harbor. And the surrounding area. I would appreciate any leads you may have as to anyone with information. On or have has witnessed any specific changes to Gig Harbor as a result of climate change, good or bad. In addition, I would like to request an opportunity for Climate Pierce County to present a ten to fifteen minute PowerPoint. To the council that shows the need for a local plan to meet the new twenty fifty sustainability standards. And the simplest and most cost-effective solutions to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pete. Again, if you want to send something on to Tony Pasecki. Or Josh Stecker or city clerk, would you have to take a look at it? Any other callers who wish to comment on non-agenda items? Please raise your hand or push star nine. Yes, caller eighteen thirty-two or five one six, go ahead. I think you're on you have your hand raised, but you have your phone with a slash, so I think you're on mute. Caller eighteen thirty-two or five one six. You can speak if you. You may have to push. Star nine. Or Josh, what was the other one? Star six sometimes?
I think they're unmuted now.
Oh, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Sorry about that. Apologize if this is out of sequence. So this is Edward Nadler. I know this is not agenda. But I was calling to comment with regards to the last report, the. Traffic study from this past July. I live at nine four zero one North Harborview Drive. I think some of you may have seen emails from myself and some of my neighbors with regards to this. I would just comment with regards to the results of the July study from personal experience going through the area. That section of Harborview, in my experience, does tend to be slower, but granted, I'm only going through there usually in. Daylight hours when the traffic is heavier. Chief Bucy did make reference to a study performed last October. It was at Milton and North Harborview. The short version of that is that the eighty-fifth percentile was thirty-two miles an hour. The average was twenty-eight miles an hour. So there are other. Areas that do have higher speeds, different road designs, et cetera. One one question, if it can be shared tonight or pointed out where the information is located, I'm curious as to the. Vehicle count from the study. Just try to get an idea about the the density of traffic throughout the Harborview at any given time. And also in general, just to to thank the chief for for his response and. The department's response after the study last year, there was increased presence. And a noticeable change for a period of time in in traffic and speeding, so there is. Some impact from enforcement as well as just the electronic signs being put up. I understand that the the mayor had talked with the chief about enforcing speed limits and greatly appreciate that and. Expect that we'll continue to do so and force the posted speed limits. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other callers? Okay, I will close the public comment period. Trent, you know, kind of in regards to what the last caller said, could we post that on our website? I think that would be good. You know, I did see the two police cars down there on the way to. North Harborview. They were just past Anthony's just a couple of days ago, two police cars watching people for speeding. So that's good, but can you post that information on our website so people realize that we are checking these counts?
We can, absolutely. What all the information would you like posted?
First, why you and I sit down and talk about what we can post tomorrow? I mean, we could, I think, as is already commented, there's. Tons of way to slice and dice this data. Let's talk about what would be the most valuable for the public to see.
Perfect. The means so they know where to find it and somehow easy and then just what you feel is valuable. That's great, Tony and Trent, if you would do that.
We would do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I had closed the public comment on non-agenda items, so our first item tonight is our old business. Second reading and adoption of ordinance fourteen sixty-four. Refund bonds, L T G O refunding bonds twenty twenty-one. The report tonight is from our finance director, Dave Rodenbach.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, good evening. We now have about two million six hundred and forty-five thousand in outstanding civic center. Bonds. These are from the refunding that we did in twenty-ten. This ordinance will allow us to refund or buy back those bonds early. And in doing this, the city has about one point six million in the Civic Center Debt Reserve Fund. That will be part of the paydown. And then this ordinance allows the city to borrow up to one million one hundred fifty thousand to complete the balance of this buyback. And so essentially, this will save the city a large amount of cash flow every year up until twenty twenty-six, when the bonds are finally due. It's in excess of three hundred and fifty thousand a year in cash that will save. And the present value savings is in the ballpark of a hundred and seventy thousand. If you have any questions, I'm I'm available to answer, and if it's anything I can't answer, I have Dave Tragacer and Cynthia Weed here, the bond. Bond council for this issue. These bonds will be bank placed, which means to the city much lower issuance costs, and so a bank will buy the entire issue. And we'll be going to bid sometime in August and and finalizing the deal, I suppose sometime in August, September, you know, but much. Prior to the end of the year. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer. Otherwise, we recommend passage at this time.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Hines.
Yeah, I'd love to approve this thing. Is there an ordinance number on this thing?
I don't have one, Josh. Do we have a number?
The ordinance is fourteen sixty-four. It's on the agenda, but back of the came through and now the ordinance number with it.
Fourteen sixty-four?
Yes.
Great. Therefore, I will move to approve ordinance fourteen sixty-four, providing for the. Sales of limited tax general application refunding bonds.
Second.
Thank you.
Can we have a public comment?
Yes, we will. Any clarif- any other clarification for Dave Rodenbach? Okay, now we will open up public comment on this item. Tony, were there any written comments?
I know, Your Honor.
Okay, now I will open up for any callers on old business number one. Any callers, please push star nine. If you'd like to comment. Okay, I will close the public comment period and proceed back to council deliberation. Councilmember Franch.
Dave, as I'm looking at this, these will be retired in two thousand twenty-six.
The one point one million portion of this, yes, will be retired by twenty twenty-six.
And we're the we're and we're using the one point five million dollars.
Roughly, we're going to drain the Civic Center Debt Reserve Fund, and right now it's at about one million five hundred ninety-three thousand. So, you know, it's approximately is one point six is what we're doing, but so one million five ninety-four probably will come from Civic Center Debt Reserve. The balance will come from borrowing.
Well, I think it's a great idea. Thank you for going through the process.
Happy to.
I'd like to mention I had a call by Steve Eckert today. He was one of the people that helped set this reserve bond up, a reserve fund up many years ago. He was very pleased that council was paying this off and that the city was that that this. This fund is what it was intended to do and set up for instead instead of just carrying debt year after year. So anyway, I just wanted to pass that on to council. He would council member for probably about twenty-five years at least, and he was very pleased with. With council and the city of what we were doing. Okay, with that, we have a. For a motion, a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Okay, motion passes seven to zero. Our new business item tonight is one item is our lift station number six, Public Works Construction Contract. And our report tonight is from our city engineer, Trent Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council again. So I I think we're all very familiar with Center Sewer Lift Station number six, and we're excited. To get the project to this point of bidding it and have a viable. Contractor to recommend a ward of this public works contract to build the replacement sewer lift station. So just very briefly, the sewer lift station again. Is located at the intersection of Ryan Street, Craig Lane and Cascade Lane. It's all contained within city public right-of-way. We advertised the project on July fifteenth, opened bids on August fifth. We received four responsive bids. The low bidder is Gary Harper Construction, Inc. With a bid of one million eight hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety cents. Along with the Gary Harper Construction, Inc. Public Works contract. Contained within your council bill are the following additional project expenses. And they include the completion of the design services contract with H D R. A professional service contract amendment number four for H D R Incorporated. To provide construction support during the project in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand five hundred dollars. A materials testing contract with M T C Incorporated to perform. Materials testing and inspection during the construction, sixteen thousand one ninety-four. And a city engineer change order authority amount of one hundred fifty thousand. The project budget in the twenty twenty-one budget is one million four hundred thousand dollars. The total expenditures required to authorize this construction to proceed. Is two million four hundred fifty-nine thousand two sixty-five. So the project is a million sixty thousand over budget. And there are sufficient funds in the wastewater fund ending balance to cover these overruns. But briefly, I just wanted to provide some explanation. Of why the project costs are higher than what we had budgeted. Or what were included in the budget. Primarily, as far as the bids go. We do like it when we get more than one public works bid on a project of this type. Because it validates the the market costs for these types of projects. The low bidder is. The low bidder is a fair amount below the other three bids. And in in discussions amongst staff and with our consultant about why the pricing is higher than what we had estimated. The conclusions we've arrived at are the uncertainties of the times, and we all get tired of blaming everything on COVID, but contractor looks at a project like this, which will run through this year and well into next year to complete. There's uncertainties for them. There are risks they need to manage. And what we're seeing with current bid climate is contractors are building in risk management. They don't know if they'll be able to get materials next year. They don't know what's going to happen this winter with labor with potential government shutdowns or limitations on work. We are seeing material availability concerns on other projects that we have underway. And so this this all results in higher bid prices at this time. Also, I'd like to explain a little bit about the professional service contract amendment number four for construction support with HDR. That hundred and seventy thousand five hundred dollar budget number is for HDR to perform all the construction inspection and administration services for the construction of this project in the event that staff are not able to to manage the project in-house. We don't anticipate that being the case. However, there's a lot of projects we have underway this year and going into next spring. And so we wanted to have this contract available should we need that, should we need it during construction? So that we can properly manage the contract and steward the city's monies on this. The city engineer change order authority amount is simply an amount that we'd like to have available in the event that during construction, if some unforeseen condition arises, we're able to respond to the contractor, keep them going, not cause delays and facilitate the project without incurring any kind of a delay claim or cost by stopping the contract and bringing a change order to city council. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And I hope that helped to helps to clarify these expenditures and overruns.
Thank you, Trent. Clarifying questions from council, councilmember Woo.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that presentation, Trent. I believe that when we began work on the pedestrian lights in Gig Harbor North, that the city took receipt of some equipment ahead of time that was for the contractor doing some work. Have have we thought, is that something, did that work out? First of all, I think it did. And is it possible to do that on any other projects that we have coming up? Such as this project? Is there anything we can take a take receipt of that would cut down the cost a little bit?
Um, well, to answer your question about the pedestrian improvements project, that did work out pretty well. Given the long lead time for procuring those types of materials, light poles and electronic equipment. So that that did benefit the city and it did eliminate contractor markup on the materials. In this, in this case here, the the project's ready to award to a contractor. So there isn't that opportunity to pre purchase materials that would be of any special benefit to the project.
Is this something we'd want to look at in the future for other projects as they begin?
You know, we we staff does consider that option. But in general, we prefer to leave all material procurements with the contractor from a liability standpoint, a control standpoint, a timing standpoint. As soon as we insert ourselves as a supplier of sorts, it can really create contractual issues with the contractor.
All right, thanks very much.
We have to be really careful when we do it. Sometimes it makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
I'm kind of hearing that the other one worked because it was our own project we were installing. Whereas it's pretty hard to do that when you when you're relying on other people to bid the whole project.
That's true. Yes.
Councilmember Franch.
So Trent, when is the completion date supposedly? This contract is has two hundred working days. So just to kind of frame that, there's approximately twenty working days in a month. So it's a ten month long project will if it's awarded tonight, the contractor will start in approximately three weeks. So we'll say the beginning of September, ten months from September, the project would be completed. So roughly July of next year.
And what is the the penalty amount if they're not completed in that two hundred working days?
So we have a liquidated damages clause that is built into the contract. It's based on the bid price. And it's a there's a calculation. I don't know what it is offhand, but for a two million or one point eight million dollar project, it's probably going to be somewhere around two to three thousand dollars a day, should they not meet the completion timelines in the contract.
Thank you. Councilmember Heims.
Refresh my memory in terms of the the timeline on this thing from a sense of urgency standpoint. And the reason I say that is there's strong consensus, I believe, in certain markets that things are going to cool off when sanity starts to prevail, and it will, okay? As stimulus money runs out and a whole bunch of other things run out, the economic situation is going to change. It will change. And it begs the question, you know, should we be proceeding on the basis of a highly uncertain situation relative to the bid? Or do what we did on the nut shed and declare no bid? Okay.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. This lift station has needed to be replaced for well over ten years now. It's it's some a couple of years ago, we did some analysis and provided it to Public Works Committee showing the ongoing operation and maintenance costs. There's also safety issues related to employee access into the lift station as it currently stands. It's a it's limping along, I guess, is what I would say. The longer we put it off, the likelihood is, you know, it's only going to get more expensive to replace.
And it also increases the possibility of failure of the lift station itself. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, I have a couple of things, Trent, on proposed council actions. Actually, items two, three, and four, those aren't monies that we're absolutely going to spend. They're just there in case you want them contracted or approved in case you need to spend them, right? Materials testing, we may not test sixteen thousand dollars worth of testing, right? So it may be less.
That's correct. And the other budgets, yes.
And then the design consultant HDR, the estimate they gave us on June twenty-first were one hundred and forty, one million four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Was that for the construction?
Yes.
So that was only like six weeks ago. And they were twenty-five percent off on their estimation. All the things that you mentioned that would reasons why the cost have increased so much. Those same reasons were valid, you know, six weeks ago as they are now. So I think it's they're not very accurate is what I'm saying in their their estimation of cost. And I guess I just share everybody's frustration. And I remember when we looked at all the different designs for this lift station. We had a public outreach. We had the residents. We we had lots of renderings done. And we made our decision based upon part of it, anyway, at least my decision was based based upon one item being a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than the other. And now it is so frustrating that we spent that time trying to figure out that then. And now here we are, a million dollars over budget. So I just I know it's got to be done, but and there's no way around it. It's just frustrating to me that we we spend all that time and things have gotten out of hand, not anyone's fault necessarily. I'm just saying, or anybody's fault. It's just frustrating.
I concur with you. Councilmember Rodenberg, all staff concurs and you know, we wish we had more of a crystal ball to see the what and why is going on. I will tell you that when we opened bids on the fifth, I immediately did call our consultant and asked, I grilled them on what's happening with your cost estimating? Because we're we're way off. They're way off. So I don't know. We'll just try to do better.
Thank you, Trent.
Thank you. Good point. Councilmember Aversold.
Yeah, my on yet. Trent, do you have any, maybe you're not the right person to ask, but do you have any knowledge about the water, our water treatment plant, just what you said about supplies running low or having difficulties, maybe getting materials? Is there any conversation taking place about stockpiling? Whatever we essential needs we need to have for our water treatment plant, should this COVID thing start getting worse and worse?
I I don't really know on the wastewater treatment plant, if there are certain materials that they're procuring ahead of time.
Okay, well, it's something we should start to consider. At least a six month get us through hell supply.
And I can certainly talk with Jeff about that when he's back from vacation. I do know that there's been a nationwide, not a worldwide chlorine issue, and I did talk to Jeff about that. And he said that we were pretty good shape for the next two to three months when it comes to our chlorine supply.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other questions. Do I have a motion?
Do we not have public comment?
We don't do public comment until we actually get a motion on the table.
Oh, well, then I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay.
I authorized the mayor to execute a public works contract with Gary Harper Construction, Inc. in an amount not to exceed one million eight hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety cents. And number two, I moved to authorize the mayor to execute a professional services contract amendment, number four, for construction support services with HDR, Inc. in an amount not to exceed one hundred seventy thousand dollars, four hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. And number three, I authorized, I moved to authorize the mayor to execute a professional services contract for materials testing with MTC, Inc. in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars. And number four, I moved to authorize the city engineer to approve additional public works contract expenditures up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I second that.
Just a second. Thank you. Now we will open up the public comment on this council bill. Tony, were there any written comments that were sent to the city?
No, your honor.
Thank you. I would turn to the attendees. If there is anyone that's attending that would like to comment, please push star nine to comment on this. Just one sec. I got to break this apart. I can't see their hands. Just a second. Okay, I don't see. Okay, that's why I don't see any. I will close the public comment portion. I mean, we refer back to council. If there's no more council comments, I will go to proceed to the vote. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, motion passes seven to zero.
I think councilmember abstain.
I'm sorry, there what? Okay, I didn't hear the abstain.
I abstain too.
Okay, yeah, do speak up. I didn't hear that at all. So was that councilmember Franch Anaheim's?
Yeah.
Eric, can we get a roll call? I don't have a count on the vote.
Sure. Councilmember Woo.
Aye.
Councilmember Heims.
Nay, not abstain. I'm sorry.
Abstain. Councilmember Aversold.
Aye.
Councilmember Markley.
Aye.
Councilmember Dinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Franch.
Reluctantly, aye.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Aye.
Okay, we had five yes, one abstain, one no.
Councilmember Franch voted yes, so it's it's six yes and one abstain.
Okay, sorry about that. Yes. Six yes, one abstain. Okay. I just heard his little objection thing, so I council reports, council comments. We had a we there's a board and commission candidate review committee special meeting August second. Councilmember Aversold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be quick on this. We approved the minutes. We had three, not contestants, three applicants for the design review board. Mr. Costle, Mr. Bradbury, and Mr. Brown. And the panel decided to select Mr. Bradbury for the position. I still believe we have one more position available. I think we're looking for someone with agricultural, but gardening, garden design, if that's correct. Councilmember Woo, councilmember Dentson, someone nod their head if I was right about that. And then I'll wait till you call on me for Parks Commission, and that is my report.
Thank you. Council, do councilmember Woo, do you want, I was going to go through the other planning and building committee unless you had something in reference to what Aversold said.
Thank you. I do want to speak about the boards and commissions, and I think that we are looking for a landscape architect, perhaps. It's what we're looking for. But one of the things that happened to us when we were sitting in this meeting, looking at applicants is that we realized that the Design Review Board has currently three architects on there, sitting on that board. And the applicant actually for an open position on that board was another architect. So I think that we, you know, several years ago, we went through and looked at a lot of the boards and commissions. We did not really look at the Design Review Board very much because it was done mostly by municipal code. Municipal code is set by council members and we didn't really investigate that very much, but because of this issue that came about with so many architects sitting on this board, I think it's time that that we actually do go back and revisit and begin to explore and ask questions about just how many architects we want to sit on this board. And and so I'm I'm asking this evening that unless I hear any any complaints, I'd love to hear some support from council members, but unless I hear any complaints, I'd like us to go back as the as the boards and commission candidate review and actually go through the requirements and the ones that we need. There are certain positions that we do need on the Design Review Board, but I do not think we need to have four architects. So I think that that's time for us now to go back and explore perhaps what other cities have done and what works well for Gig Harbor. So if anybody would like to So, um, if anybody would like to make a comment on that, any other council members? Um, or if, if there are no complaints, then I guess we'll just go back and start having that conversation as a, as a commission, as a board's commission.
Okay, uh, uh, before we go on, council member Dinson, is your comment, your comment's not referring to what council member Woo is saying, is it?
Yes, it is.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I would support council member Woo's idea. There are a number of different categories that we can fill on the design review board and architects, you know, are obviously super important. They're knowledgeable about reading plans and, and we need them. And the candidate who appeared before us certainly was qualified. But like council member Woo said, if we've already got several, there are some categories that are, that are not filled. And the chair of that committee actually said, we could really use a landscape architect. Um, and this person can be actively working or might even be better to find somebody who's retired because then we don't have to worry about conflicts of interest. So if you all know somebody in the community that perhaps has had a, an landscape architect, um, business, please encourage them to take a look at, at this opportunity. There's also a whole category about folks who have experience with historic preservation and things like that. So I mean, it's a variety of folks that we can choose from. I think council member Woo is spot on that we need to make sure that we've got a diverse, a diverse board. Thank you, council member Woo.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, and, and I think I would support council doing that. I think that's a, you know, obviously you want some of them on. But, um, there's a lot of other people that have qualifications and you don't want to stack anything too much. So I, I hope, I support that with council. Now, one question, you're just looking at the design review board or are you looking for, uh, uh, other commissions as well?
So we had already done the other commissions. We sort of skipped over design review board. Uh, so no, this is only for design review board.
Thanks for the clarification. Council member Heinz.
Yeah, I too support, uh, revisiting this and, uh, uh, by the way, you can never have too many engineers on any board, okay? Uh, so it, uh, it's something I think that's very, very, very worthwhile and, uh, it's appropriate this time. Like, uh, was indicated, we did this, what, two years ago when we went through and, and, uh, reallocated, uh, some numbers to these boards. Uh, by the way, if, if, if this is done though, it, it, I'm assuming that we would put in place the rules we had before. That is, we, we would never disenfranchise an incumbent, okay? That is, we would go to the end of that term and then say, okay, if we want to rebalance, here's how we do it.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so council member Woo, you can proceed with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yes, very good suggestion. Uh, planning and building committee meeting was August second. Uh, council member Heinz.
Yeah, we met August the second and, uh, went through the, uh, buildable lands report in, uh, great detail. Um, this, by the way, this report is actually pulled together by Pierce County with support of the city. Uh, it's actually been delayed now till the September, October timeframe as far as the official document coming forward. The initial indications are, and, and this is very preliminary, is that we have sufficient land in the city and in the UGA uh, to support both the employment, uh, the anticipated employment and anticipated um, population and dwelling, uh, requirements. That needs to be verified, but the initial indications, and I don't see, she must have signed off here. Uh, Katrina and, uh, and, uh, Carl DeSimmons is working on this. And, uh, at least the end, the early indications indicate that. That doesn't necessarily, we have to agree with all that in terms of, yeah, let's fill everything up. Uh, it just says, hey, and the initial, uh, estimates are that we will have, uh, sufficient, uh, land uh, to meet those targets.
Thank you.
Right.
Uh, thank you. Council member Franch.
Yeah, I would just, uh, once again, just like to say that, uh, I really appreciate, um, staff, including the, the committee in this process this time around. I think it's, uh, very important. And we couldn't have, uh, a better person, uh, representing us at, uh, Pierce County Regional Council and at the Puget Sound Regional Council than, than council member Heinz. He puts in a tremendous amount of effort into this. And this is some, what was, what was it, about two hundred pages or two hundred and some pages? I mean, it was.
Two hundred and forty pages.
It's, it's a lot to go through. And, um, so whoever steps up to fill his place next year, um, I hope that they're, uh, they, they know what they're in for and they'll be able to put the time and effort that, uh, council member Heinz has done.
I don't scare, don't scare off right away. You know, I know council member Markley's already meeting with Tony and getting up to speed for that.
Well, one, one thing I should advise you on, it's, it's previews of coming attractions. I, I ran into a table in that, that particular document, two hundred and forty pages were, that showed, uh, how the various municipalities in Pierce County did relative to their two thousand twenty targets heading to two thousand and thirty. And Gig Harbor stood way out there called, we, according to their old, uh, density numbers, uh, which by the way have been upgraded now from one point eight occupants to two point two occupants per dwelling to account for the, uh, basically the influx of families into Gig Harbor. It's not retire, all retirees anymore. We got families in Gig Harbor North. But what came through there is we, um, according to the old numbers with one point eight occupants per dwelling, uh, we met ninety-three percent of our objective for two thousand thirty in calendar year two thousand twenty. With the new density numbers we exceeded. We are one of three municipalities in all of Pierce County that got past the fifty percent mark, which one would assume going from two thousand ten to two thousand twenty and on to two thousand thirty, you'd be fifty percent of the way there on a linear basis. We were only one of three that met that requirement. In fact, Tacoma, Pualup, a lot of the big ones, they are down in the mud, seventeen percent, twenty percent, those kind of numbers. Um, at some point, we need to have a real interesting fireside chat on my favorite topic called, we gave it the office, and we really did. From two thousand ten to two thousand twenty, we really gave it the office more than, more than a lot of people, a lot more. So, um, stay tuned for that one. Uh, I, I think it's a big issue. Uh, and, uh, uh, I, I guess I'll just stop right there, but I think that the, 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 the documents prove what we've been saying all along, but I didn't realize, I don't think any of us realized, how the other municipalities were doing. And they have not done very well at all. So, uh, stay tuned. We'll have a discussion on that.
Thank you, council member Heinz, and thank you for doing that, that, um, sitting for us on that, on that, uh, committee. Parks Commission, uh, meeting of August fourth. Council member Aversold.
Yes, uh, we had a Parks Commission meeting August fourth. Uh, minutes were approved. We went over the pros plan, got an update on that. Uh, Mary Barber gave us a update on the survey that's going to be coming out. And Jeff gave us an update on the public works. Uh, and that pretty much sums it up. They're going to be really excited to know that the parks manager position's been posted. And, um, it's about all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council comments. Okay, our announcements of upcoming meetings, we have the public works committee meeting which Tuesday, August tenth, would have been canceled. City council meeting of August twenty-third is canceled, so our next meeting will be, uh, in September. I believe it is, uh, September ninth, is that what, let's see. September thirteenth would be our next city council meeting. We have, the, the city offices are closed on September sixth for Labor Day week holiday. And planning and building committee meeting is Tuesday, September seventh at three PM. And board and commission candidate review committee meeting is Monday, September thirteenth at three PM. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Look at that.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, co- council. There is a concert tomorrow night and we are closing the street for it because it's a big one. Hope to see you around. Thank you, council, and have a great evening.
Thank you.